Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everyone. It's good to see everyone in person.
Yes.
Yes.
Versus Zoom meetings that we can't hear each other.
Yes.
That last meeting was...
Oh, it was hard.
The push all of us over the...
The last meeting was so, so frustrating.
It was probably one of our most important meetings.
Yeah.
Right.
In a long time. All right, roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Sandy Kufa.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
All right, first thing I'll entertain a motion for bills payable.
I will make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $107,376.45.
Do we have a...
Support.
Okay, we have support. Any questions?
Our emergency management fund, are we hoping to get reimbursed on that cost or we don't know?
We don't know. We have no idea. You hear rumors, yes, you hear no. There's a few different bills sitting on the governor's desk, ones to help the guys, you know, first responders, what, a thousand bucks per employee, that's one of them, and we just don't know. So...
So where did the 325 thermometer get placed? Where do they go? Are they being allocated to our trucks, equipment, department heads? Does anybody know where those are located?
Those thermometers, one's going on the front front truck on the side, the other one's going on the island. They're more accurate than the laser that they use on somebody's forehead, especially in the summertime when people are being out in the yard, you can't get an accurate temperature up to somebody. And that's part of our protocols when we go in if somebody has signs and symptoms of COVID-19, to take a temperature.
First and foremost?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else for bills payable? Hearing nothing, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next, we have public hearing for the township budget. I'll entertain a motion to go into our public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the township budget at 3:10.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I will now open up a public hearing for our township budget. If anyone wishes to speak or have questions on township budget, please come forward and...
Well, I'd like to get started by reviewing the 2019-2020 final budget amendments, if we could.
Well, that won't be... Are you speaking as public or as a trustee? This is for public.
This is the public.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public, any public? Hearing now, entertain a motion to close the public meeting for the township budget.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the township budget at 3:11.
Okay, motion of support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone oppose, motion carries. Next, we have the supervisor's report, and sorry I didn't get this out to you with the packet. It's been extremely busy, but it's all good. High water, our current status is, I mean, we have high water, it is holding, it's staying. I would have thought and hoped it would have dropped some. The Elginak water gauge is at 578.1, pretty much about the same we had from our last meeting. We did have some rain that spiked for a little bit and went down. I think last week Saturday, we had some roads that were flooded and we had to help get the pumps going and get them dry again. Forecast, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers says that we should be peaked now. Actually, they said we were going to peak about two weeks ago and start falling, so... I know the next nine days, they're calling for lots of warm weather and very little rain, so I'm hoping the plug gets pulled and this water starts going down. And we have had enforcement on the river for the no wake, mostly on the weekends by St. Clair County sheriffs and our own Clay Township Police Department. It's, you know, it's going pretty good. We do warnings and tickets. And it, we could probably use five, six boats out there instead of, you know... I mean, today, there's no boats out, you know, it's just what it is.
Art, did you think it'd be appropriate if you could just rehash what the current rules and regulations are?
Well, it depends on where you're at in the, I mean, basically, most of the river is the 200-600-foot rule. So if you're 26 feet and over, it's no wake from 600 feet from shore or dock. And if you're below 26 foot, it's 200 feet from a shore or dock. A lot of boats also forget too, it's the US, it's the federal law. There's supposed to be no wake from 100 feet from another boat, too. And that never gets enforced. You know, and I, you know, that's the law, you know. I go out every, I probably go out five days a week and, you know, I get, you know, sometimes in a little pontoon boat, and we get tossed and turned a lot. And, you know, they're closer than 100 feet, but, you know, it is what it is. And like I say, enforcement is a challenge, but, you know, we try our best. So there are certain parts of the channels, on my deckers, there's a spot on middle channel, and there's a lot of offshoot channels that are just no wake for all vessels. So keep that in mind also. Our COVID-19 report, we may have one active case in the township. Is that a pretty good, we got one? The DDA COVID-19 grant's been going well. I think we've approved three. We just got another one in today for a request for $600-$700 for the new dental office at Elginak Dental. So we're reviewing that and processing that going so far. So, and I did, you know, distribute a lot of hand sanitizers and masks to a lot of the companies, and it's going well. For the donations are going well for the Elginak Food Pantry, extremely well. And for the food giveaways, we actually received, Elginak Live got a grant for $2,000 and the Community Foundation grants, another $1,000. They are actually all funded through the rest of the summer. So don't give any more money to our food giveaways, they're funded. I'd rather see you spend that money at a local business and help some of our business people. But it's a good thing, and in fact, I got a phone call today about a Qantas club that wants to do a food giveaway, another date here, no cost to us. And we're going to look at different times and a place to do that. Like I say, and everyone, you know, every time we do this, we're feeding over 100 families, so there's demand there for sure. Okay, that wasn't me. I don't know who that was. Yeah. Music in the park's been going well, it's been well attended. Actually, I just filled out a grant that might supplement it. There's a St. Clair County grant for reopening. It's not for much money, maybe a thousand to $2,000 for an event that happens July or August, outside event, fun event. And it's something that could already be scheduled. And we put in there, we actually added a couple of dates because the Pick Tournament was canceled and the Harrison Island and the Field Day was canceled. And so we supplemented Music in the Park with some more concerts. And so I'm asking for some money to help fund those. But I just, it was a one-page letter, I just got done typing it, because it has to be in by tomorrow, and shoot it to them. We did close on the Beach Park property last week. And that's the property across from Catch 22. I said "we," Six Rivers Conservatory owns it. And they're going to hold it for the county until the county gets the grant money to buy it and take it over. And we are still talking to a few of the homeowners that are right next to them about possibly purchasing them also to put some more property into the park. And those will also be funded by the DNR Trust Fund Grant. So that's going fairly well. The DDA, the Clay Township Downtown Development Authority directed me to attempt to purchase 6009 Point Tremble Road. It's a little house behind Ligas, just downstream, and it's next to our fishing pier. They gave me the order to offer up to $170,000. And I actually got a signed purchase offer for the property on behalf of the Clay Township and the DDA for $165,000. And we'll be closing on that July 2nd. The idea of the DDA was, this is right next to the pier. And the house is, it is a tear-down house. And it would be really kind of difficult to build on the same property. It's really a non-conforming type of property. And since there's already utilities, water, sewer things there, the DDA would be able to put up a bathroom, which, you know, they want to put a bathroom there to support that fishing pier and fishing, the pier.
Is there an amusement from the fishing pier to that?
Yes, there's actually a direct, it is connected through the, like an alley. So I'll be doing that Thursday morning. I saw a grant is going, is in full swing, and I did see we, there's a sewer truck going around. And so if it's on your street, it might make your toilets rumble a little bit when they're checking out the sewers. And I did see the paperwork, we did put in for our first draw money on that. We didn't receive that yet, I'm assuming, so... But we did file the paperwork to get our first reimbursement on that. It's a $1.1 million grant, so... And we did receive some news of our bike trail grant was approved, matching grant to do some maintenance work on the bike pallet, the bike trail that runs from Elginak up to the state park. It's, there's a good section of it underwater. And then there's some very big hole, muskrat holes and stuff in the asphalt. And it, it's actually, there's some spots that are dangerous if you're riding a bike, so... That's, so the total would be $40,000 on maintenance. Cleanup weekend was last week, it was very busy. How many containers did we get, John? Seventeen, forty-yard containers, mostly on the island. We burned a lot on the island, too. How many tires? Did we... About $500, because we got a grant, I got a tire grant up to $2,000. So I'll have to do the paperwork for that. And I kind of ballparked that we'd get 600 tires, so I'm sure it's prorated by tires, so we'll have to get on that here pretty soon. But it was very busy, and you wouldn't believe the stuff that... We'll just leave it at that. Jobby Noonner was last week, Friday, too. It was uneventful. We had about 25% of the people who normally come to that given one reason or another. And it was, the weatherman helped us out because he said we were going to have a storm around 5:00. And, boy, we had a dark crowd, and most of the people went, left, and the storm never came. So, thank you, Sonny Elliott, wherever you are. Okay, that concludes my supervisor's report. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, move right along to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of June 15th, 2020, check reports, and the row watch.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. In our new business, first order, we have to set a public hearing for our police, our fire, and our garbage, mileage rates and fees. And the motion basically, I'll make the motion, I'll set the public hearing for police and fire. Public hearing for police and fire and garbage fees for August 3rd, 2020, at 7:00 PM here at the township hall.
Support.
Here we have motion of support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Next, we have the Historical Society contribution of $3,000. Is that for this year's budget?
Yes. Today.
Today.
Today's budget.
Right. Now...
I'll make a motion to approve the Historical Society contribution for $3,000 coming from line item 101, 965, 96501.
Support.
Okay, we have motion of support. Any discussion on that? Basically, I'll just, for people's knowledge, townships are allowed to spend money on just specific things based on state statute. And there's actual state statute that says, that said that townships can spend money on, for museums and senior citizens. So that's why we were able to donate money to the St. Clair County senior citizens and this group, so... Okay, we have motion of support.
Aye.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. We do have a fireworks request for Marsh, it's 8543 Marsh Road for Monday, August 10th. It's Elginak Baptist Church.
I'll make a motion to approve the fireworks request for 8543 Marsh Road on Monday, August 10th.
Yeah, motion of support, this is a yearly thing, and I don't think we've ever had any complaints or anything from this.
Mr. Gobel does a really nice job, a really safe job, and I think he does a really good job of keeping in touch with our fire chief before he...
He does. Yeah, so... Okay, any more discussion? We have, we have motion of support, right? Okay, all in favor of permitting fireworks on, for 8340, 8543 Marsh Road on August 10th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2020-9B, set the annual FOIA coordinator stipend.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-9B, setting the annual FOIA coordinator stipend, which we did do this when we did all of the other salaries and stipends, however. There was a misnumber in the amount of the stipend, causing a small decline in pay.
By a whole.
We're going to rectify that by passing it with the amount that it was actually budgeted for, so...
Support.
Which is $2,575 annual.
Yep, it's $2,500, $2,575. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on that? That's a job I would not want. Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes. Okay, next, we have our budget amendments. And that's for the existing budget. And Kristy worked on this quite hard, I might add, and... You want to...
So I did speak with the auditor. I had sent my proposed amendments out last night for review, and I did speak with her this morning, and she got some changes. So that's what I have presented to you today, the general fund. We are amending department totals only. So we're not necessarily amending the difference between the revenue and expenditures, but we're amending the department totals. So there are four department totals in the general fund that need to be amended. Building and grounds, the department total would be, for expenditures, would be Emergency management, $345,000. Highway, streets, and bridges, $170,000. And debt service would be $46,500. The police fund total amendment would be $2,856,543. Garbage fund total, $906,303. Drug law enforcement fund, $10,000. And federal forfeiture fund, $3,046.
What was the general fund total again?
For which department?
Building and grounds, probably.
Yeah, I don't see that on the sheet, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, I put the total fund, but we have to amend by the department, so those are the four numbers that I just read off. Do you want me to repeat them?
Yeah, do that, please.
Building and grounds, $1,174,512. Emergency management, $345,000. Highway, streets, and bridges, $170,000. And debt service, $46,500. Does anyone have questions? That was...
So was this a decline or an incline on the budget amendments?
This is an incline of expenditure, so an increase in expense is why we're amending that.
Predominantly it was because of the property we bought.
So we all, we know where it's all at anyways, right?
Yes.
Well, can we fill that in a little bit?
Sure.
I'd like to talk about the properties that we bought, because my estimation has been three, as far as I can recollect, plus this potential for Ligas property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
The water department, potential driveway over there on Point Tremble, that was from last year, wasn't it?
Yes, that was last year.
Last year or the year before?
Year before.
Was it the year before?
Yep.
Okay, that's got nothing to do with this year. So as far as I know, we have a purchasing of property on Holene Street?
Yes, Holene, Taft, and M29.
Okay. And together, that purchase was something like $304?
Uh, I think it was about $320.
Two, $220.
Right, $334 with back taxes.
$334?
Yep.
So in our board meeting, didn't we approve like $274?
No.
I think it was $300 plus back taxes.
Yeah, it was.
Is that what our...
$54 isn't bad.
So it was, it was $54?
$54,000 plus all of her properties and rear...
That's a ton of money, okay. Property on COVID bike, that was for our potential blue water kayak launch.
Kayak launch, nature park, yes.
Potential bike hitchhiker.
Right.
Okay. This is a cooperative effort with the DNR, isn't it?
Uh, not really. I mean, they're going to help us out develop it, but this is a Clay Township park. We do have, and I've been, actually just started initiating talks, we're going to get about $100,000 back for this. This property will end up costing the township about $15,000.
That's through a DNR trust fund.
The DNR trust fund grant. During the whole COVID thing, they were, they just shut right down.
Yep.
And so we're almost, now they're playing catch-up. I know they approved our appraisals of it.
Yep.
And we're just waiting for the red tape. They're going to give us 75% of it, of the purchase price. And then St. Clair County Parks and Rec is going to match 12.5% of the purchase price for us, too.
So what did we buy that property for?
Total is around $115.
$115, I was going to say.
Yep. Yep, $115.
And the DNR trust fund grant, do we expect to realize that money in next year's budget?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm hoping next three or four months.
Okay.
And that'll go into the general fund?
Yes, it goes in the general fund, and my budget proposal, I'd like to kind of earmark that money to development of that park. Now, I don't know if we'll be able to with the water levels, but we're going to have to do some engineering. And I'd like to at least get a little, small gravel parking lot and a dock going out to the waterway where we can get a kayak in.
Okay, so right now, that's full $115 is showing coming off of our general fund?
Yep. And then we had the $200,000 for the beach property for the county that we just talked about.
Yep.
No more parks, we're done.
Well, I don't know, we just bought some property over there on the other side of Ligas, so...
That's the DDA.
That's DDA, that's not, that's not this board.
Okay.
So the DDA did that with their budgeted funds?
Yep.
Had nothing to do with our general funds?
Right. DDA is independent from us.
Yep, okay.
They capture their own money and they manage it.
So now this beachfront property was a couple hundred grand, right?
$200.
And that's a cost that we have to recognize on this year's budget?
Mm-hmm.
None of that is going to be reimbursed back to us?
No.
Okay.
But we get, we'll get assistance in the development? We don't develop it, anything. That's it, we're done.
So you think the county...
The county has earmarked, yep, the county has earmarked about $3.5 million to develop that property. And then they will manage it, costing us nothing other than our regular Parks and Rec tax that we pay now, and get nothing for it.
All right. Well, I think three out of four are really good. I'm a little concerned about that property over there, all those back taxes. I don't think I was, my mind wasn't wrapped around a full $54,000 worth of riggers.
I thought the back taxes was only like $12,000 or something.
It's $54 grand, right?
Is this what it was? Is this what it was?
Fifty-four in background.
I, I guess we just need to, uh, looking forward, right? I'm, I'm sure, I'm not alone in the sentiment that we need to really pay attention to what we do the next six months.
Big time.
Well, on the, on the other point, we do have, uh, some, uh, some of that property can be disposed of.
Yes. That'll be for another discussion if we want to. So, do we have any questions on, uh, on the amendments? Anyone wanna entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the budget, proposed budget amendments for 2019, 2020, as presented by Kristi.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Joanna Sherky?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfo?
Yes.
Okay, motion cap passes. Okay, next we have resolution twenty twenty thirteen, adopt the township budget for twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, adapting the township budget for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one with a correction in the water fund to reflect two million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Grand total consisting of eleven million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any discussion?
Was your, uh, was your water correction taking off three grand?
About four thousand.
The water correction was reflecting what Artie had presented for the budget total.
You have a question, how does this compare with our budget for last year total?
It, it's up a little bit. Well, you, we have different funds. Last year, we didn't have the Colony, um, special assessment project for the Colony Road. And, uh, so that one hundred and sixty-nine thousand is the last of the, uh, to pay for that special assessment, and then we have, uh, forty-five thousand dollars, um, a year payment for the, to pay the bond for that. So, i- it's not really apples to apples. And, and, you know, i- it's funny, because I, I have to have a zero, a ba, zero budget, you know, revenues equals expenses. So, uh, assessments go up, our, but under the headly, you know, our, our, our tax, taxable value comes up something, not as much as the, uh, appreciation of the property, but, uh, so, uh, you know, i- it, it's all really a function of that. It's a function of, uh, state revenue sharing, which, uh, you know, is actually gonna be down sixteen percent, they're, they're telling me. I'd, I'd be happy if that's all it is down, truthfully.
So, we're up by what, five, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand?
It's hard to see. I, I'd have to look, uh... Well, if you take those two funds out, yeah, we're probably, we're, we're probably up about three percent.
You know, it's, uh, obviously those two funds are anomalies, right?
Well, we.
That's not a financial term, believe me, but.
It, it's, uh, it's work that we did, and has, you know, and, uh, we have a special payment or a special assessment to pay for it. They, they asked us to do the work and pay for it.
Okay, I get it. So, they, okay, I, I get it.
Yeah. Like, I, for instance, our general fund with all the ones, last year, the budget was one million, seven hundred and forty thousand. This year is one million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand. So, I've, uh, uh, one point seven million, we went up eight grand on the general fund.
Artie, if you have to forgive my ignorance, can you remind me again of what debt service is, what that entails?
Which, uh, the?
I'm seeing just in some of my reports on the general, there's, there's some debt service of like.
We have a, a, we, we have a, a, a fund that was a construction fund, and this is how our auditors told us to set it up. That was confusing to me. We have, uh, a, a fund for the construction of the water line. And that was just shy of a million dollars. We have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars still outstanding on it that we, we have to pay, or, or somewhere abouts, hoping there'll be a little bit of money left in it. And then we have a debt retirement fund to retire the debt or, and pay for the construction fund. So, so we, we posted a bond, and the bond went, the revenues from the bond went into the construction fund to pay for the job. Now, over the next twenty years, we have to, or is it fifteen on this one?
It's twenty.
It's twenty, that's right. They, I did ask them if they wanted fifteen. Now, they said they wanted twenty. So, over the next twenty years, we collect special assessments from the Colony Road people, and, uh, that money goes to pay for the bond that paid for the construction.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Just retire that debt?
Yep.
One chunk at a time?
Yep. So.
So, the special assessment for the bonds construction will go down over?
It'll be, it'll be gone next year. That one will disappear, hopefully. And, uh, then we'll just have the, uh, the debt retirement fund for the Colony Water Line.
And they did overpay, um, on their first year of the debt retirement fund. So, we did pay additional principal last year, which removed three years from the back of the bond.
Right.
And it also cut down the principal payments every year throughout the bond.
Yes.
Because they overpaid and we applied early?
Yep, we applied. Right, they, yeah, go ahead.
Nope.
No, they, they overpaid, so.
Yep.
You know, it's, we don't make any interest, so we, 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 you know, not much interest in our, our council. We put it up. And, and it actually re- reduced the length of the payment of that bond, three years. And so, potentially, their, their special, that would drop off, wouldn't it, Sherri? So, as soon as it's paid off. So, we saved them already, we've saved them three years of special assessments towards this.
Yeah, well, they sort of saved itself as well.
Right. Well.
The way it was set up?
Yep. They don't know that yet, but maybe they do now. Yeah, maybe they do now, so.
Keep the horn a little bit, you're looking out for them.
Yep. Any other questions or anything? We do have a motion and support, right?
Thank you.
Did, um, one other question on the police department, that one, I, I gave you a question about, uh, hundred thousand plus on the, uh, manpower?
Yes.
Was that rectified, or?
Yes. We're good.
Okay.
Any more questions? It's a biggie. Roll call, please.
Joanna Sherky?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfo?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. It's a lot of work.
Just for note, the following, um, expenses will be for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget.
Right.
Now that we pass the vote.
That's right. All right, next we have our li- liability insurance quote from Nickel and Saf, and when did we get this? About five days ago?
Yes.
And, uh, and actually, I, I was waiting for, for this to put numbers in for this budget that we just passed. Total comes out to, uh, for township-wide, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. I, I haven't felt the need to shop it. We, you know, for a long time, we were at, with Burman Flowers, and, and we shopped it hard, and that was three, four years ago. And at that time, we were paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our liability insurance, four years ago. And, um, shopped it hard, and Nickel and Saf, they, they came in about ninety-five thousand back then. And so, as cost goes up, you know, we're, we're back at the a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar level. And, uh, I mean, I, I give them kudos, and we just did a lot of, they, they, uh, actually went and appraised everything that we have in township, all our properties. Uh, they did a lot of work to make sure that everything is assessed right, as far as the insurance values and everything. So, I was, I was a little nervous, thought we actually get a bigger bump. I think this, uh, oh, what's this, uh, what is it? About, uh, there's a percent in here. I'm sorry. I had, it's about a six percent increase total. But in today's market, that's pretty good.
Do you have any insurance coverage? I don't see it in here anywhere for, uh, our electronics or mainframes that you have?
Yes.
Is it, I don't see it in there, so.
It, it's in here.
Of course, this is just a summary, right?
Right. Yeah, we have terrorists, uh, we're, we're protected for terrorist attacks, uh, all, all the, uh, cars and everything. In fact, we have probably about three, four cars, old police cars and stuff going to auction. So, once they, they, they haven't had any live auctions lately, that's why we have them here. Once that happens, we'll, uh...
At some point in time, I'd like to have that one section for the, our electronics or our computer or internet system.
Okay.
Pull it out, take a look at that.
It will, uh, it'll, it'll, there'll be a little bit of reduction. I mean, this, this includes our bonding for our employees, um... It's pretty comprehensive. In fact, I think when Nickel and Saf took it over, they added some things that we didn't, we weren't covered on. In, um, in our old policy, like the pier liability on that, uh, the Colony Tower, you know, that's, township owns that, this, this is covered on it.
So, once we process and support this, do we sign on the dotted line, or just wrote on the check, or how is that?
We'll sign on the dotted line, and we usually pay at the, towards the end. Do we pay in the beginning? Pay in the beginning, we'll send them a check.
I, the reason I make comment is because this market right now is extremely dollar.
Oh, yeah.
And for our rates to go up six percent is almost unheard of.
It's a good, right?
There are companies right now that are getting forty, fifty, sixty percent hikes. So, why is it six percent? I, I, I don't wanna ask any questions. I just wanna sign, and here's another year.
The underwriters, you know, it's, uh, what, Trudent is the underwriter?
Trident.
Or Trident. And, uh, and like I say, we, uh, they, they reassessed all our, our, our properties throughout the whole township.
I'd also say we had probably some historical claims that had dropped off.
Yes, we had, we had claims that dropped off, and I, do we have any this year? Got one, a few more hours.
A couple more hours.
So.
I just think they're, they're cheap as straight. It's, it's a, it's a good, very competitive rate.
Yep.
I really expected it to be a lot more.
I, I, uh, I, I really like Nickel and Saf, and I, you know, you, you shop it out, like, you know, there's a lot of these insurance companies, they'll be more my, oh, we give you this grant and that grant, and, and stuff like that. You know, you know, it's, it, it, these guys are, are straight shooters, in my opinion, and, uh, if they see us doing something where it is definitely gonna reduce our exposure, they help us out, like the, the policies that we approved that are meaning that nobody can hear. You know, they, they're, they're paying twenty-five percent of, of that bill, because they know it's gonna, you know, reduce our exposure and probably in the long run, save the township money. Therefore, they're, they're passing along. Yep. Exactly. So, we have, uh, motion and support?
No, we don't have anything.
No? We don't?
I will make a motion to approve the liability insurance with, through Nickel and Saf in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Sandy Kupfo?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Joanna Sherky?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have, uh, agenda software, and this is in, in our budget that we just approved. And I'll let, uh, our clerk Valentine take it away.
Well, the trial software that I was using to give all you guys your, um, board packets electronically before the meeting, that's so that you didn't need to come in and, um, pick up your packet to see what was on the agenda or the board packet, um, is, is coming to an end as far as being able to upload and utilize that. They would prefer that we carry on with them for about seven thousand dollars annually. Over the last year, I've kind of been researching other companies. I think that, um, my proposal is to go with Granicus, uh, for peak agenda. It's gonna be set up very similar, and I think it's going to also upress the ability to upload everything onto our website. So, if you don't get an email from me, you know, with your board packet, you can always look on the website, and you should have the agenda there, the board packet, which is a better role for a while, however, it was, um, finding something that was a little bit more user-friendly cost-wise. I think the seven thousand dollars is a bit extreme, but I think the thirty-three hundred dollars that they are proposing, with a three percent increase for the next two years, is something that we could manage a little bit better. And we'll also be able to utilize it for ZVA and planning commission as well, aside from their big, um, building plans or, you know, but, so.
You answered the two questions I had.
Could DVA use that as well?
Absolutely.
So, as I, uh, go on the website, we're gonna look at the documents as far as the.
Yep. It should be there historically, like, you know, right now, I can, if we were to have that software, I can hold three maximum slots at one time with the software that we're using right now, if it wasn't a trial. Um, and then I have to drop one off, or this should be able to, for as long as we wanna keep them there.
Will you look at the minutes and stuff as well?
Uh, yep, yep, it should be able to.
Just like we have, okay. That helps.
So, aside from committing to another, um, software agenda, um, then the board packets, as of now, will be back to paper packets that you will have to pick up from your mailbox, just, you know.
The seven thousand dollars is too expensive for?
I thought so, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
$3,300, I mean, I'm just.
I'm sure they have, you know, other things to sell us, to upsell us on and add us other great features and tools, but I think just to start out, see what it's about, see what we can get out of it, I'm willing to put some time and training into it and.
We have, we have about 60 meetings township-wide a year. So basically, is it worth 50 bucks a meeting to be able to do it electronically, put it, you know, be able to share it to everybody in front of our website and, you know, email it?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's the question. That's, that's the question. Is it worth 50 bucks a meeting? I, I think so.
It's a big time saver.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, when we get large board packets and, you know, large documents, we can't scan them and upload them right now because of, you know, size limits that we have, you know, going from our scanner to our email or from our email to be able to upload on the website. So it's kind of all comes as.
You know, it could save 40 bucks a meeting in paper, some of them.
Some of them, yes.
Plus the time.
And the time.
Right?
Yes.
Scan it all in?
What's, what's the range of paper costs is now?
Well.
But anyhow.
The wear and tear of the copy or.
Then you got to pay for the, yeah.
Of course.
No. So like I say, it's about 50 bucks a meeting.
This is a one-year contract?
Um, it's three. It's one year with their proposal of year two and three with a 3% increase.
That's standard right now.
Yeah. Everything in township is three years, unfortunately.
And is it the data, is it like cloud-based storage?
Yep.
And is it proprietary? We own our data?
I believe so. I can double check on that.
I know we feed it to them, so we have it.
And it's.
But there's no private information in here or anything?
No, it's all public.
It's all public.
Right. And I mean, primarily what they provide service for is for governments. So it's not like, you know, we're just a government sneaking in on a, on a nonprofit platform. You know, they tailor their services to governments.
Do we have a motion yet?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion.
We're waiting for you.
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda software by Granicus, an amount of $3,300 coming from line item 101-215-76000.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a request to purchase six computers. Excuse me, and these will all be in, in the office. Chris, you want to talk? I mean, who, who's exactly getting these?
That would be the two front counter computers.
Right.
The three back counter computers and the deputy treasurer's office.
Okay. And these are, the computers that we have are end-of-life. The operating systems are, are these Windows 7?
Some of, some of them are. I'm not sure about the front counter. They can't even get the resolution on the screens.
Right.
And.
Yeah, they. They've been around. So.
The auditors use the deputy treasurer computer and that one is like gasping for breath when they start it up.
Yep.
That's the one we'd like to be able to leave on so that our department heads can log in and pull up their budget at any time, but the kind of way, might wait until we've got a new computer back there.
Yep.
Is that going to include the monitors?
Yes. This price, no. This is just the CPUs.
This is what?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Just towers themselves.
We budgeted in a budget to replace monitors.
Right.
It's not included on this.
So we got six towers for basically just a little under $4,200 with Windows 10, with Windows 10.
Now, the Intel Core i5, is that going to be big enough for future, you know, last two or three years anyways?
It's the same thing that we just purchased for the other computers. So for the life of the computer itself, yes.
Does this complete the updating of the township offices?
Aside from, well, for the most part, my computer was new when I started here in '15.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll probably be coming up. I think I had a conversation with you about our elections back office, possibility of putting a computer back in there. We used to have a state computer in there that they decommissioned and pulled out of there. So now we don't have a computer back there. So it's kind of a lot of juggling back and forth. We'll see how these two elections go. Maybe before we do another general election, we'll put one back there, especially because of the absentee ballots. It's a cumbersome process to try and run out of two other offices when all your supplies are back in another office. But I think we'll be all right. We're getting through it. We'll wait and update them on a later date. But Arty's computer.
Yeah, I got three years on this one.
You're three?
So nothing is drastic.
This is basically, we're going to see this. It's like a.
We got a lot of.
Or something else, right?
Yeah.
You need to replace a couple every year.
Yeah.
It'd be a little bit nicer to be able to do that, other than, you know, twelve computers all at once, but.
You know, I, a lot of places, maybe we might want to look at that. Instead of you buy them, you look at a lease, a three-year lease. There's advantages and disadvantages. If it breaks, I mean, I've been in the business, used to be in the business a long time. If it breaks, you know, it's their computer, you call them up and a new one shows up. But the data is worth, on it, is worth, usually worth more than the computer itself. You know, so we have backups and things. But, you know, that's something, you know, we could, we could look at, is doing a three-year lease, lease. And then what they usually do at the end of the lease, a lot of times, oh, their computers are working great, why lease a new one? They'll give you a buyback of like, because they don't want them and it costs more to ship them than what's their worth to them. So they'll give you a buyback of 50 bucks or whatever to, to just keep them. So maybe something that, that's something we might want to look at. Usually though, the bigger companies, they, you know, they, there's a quantity of, you know, for a better deal, but we can look at it.
Can't imagine them being cheaper than $10 a month when they, you know, for $600 and they last just five years.
Right, yeah. Like you say, $600, they say, get five years out of them, so.
Probably the ones up front are probably, I think they were placed just before I started here, so they're at five, six years.
Yeah.
Yeah, lines up five years.
Yeah, you're right. I did those, okay.
So on the line item proposal, we have no price, but Windows 10. So I'm assuming we become loaded.
Actually, they have to have Windows 10 Pro to be able to work with our server.
Right.
So that's going to be preloaded, all our licenses and stuff?
We'll probably have to buy some other software, Word. They don't come with Office on, but not, the front ones don't need Office.
Right.
The back one doesn't. So two or three of them might need the.
I don't know if we already have them set up with licenses or if they're running off of old licenses.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, the licenses. I didn't look at it. Oh, they're, they're probably on the monthly license, so we're good.
There, yeah.
We're, we're good. We don't need the license, though. All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for six computers at $4,199.94 with Windows 10, out of line item
And. Okay, we have motion and support. Who are we purchasing? Is this from Amazon? Okay. Just want to make sure. Motion and support. Any more?
I have a, I have a police chief do the background.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to purchase six Dell computers. Signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a new hire, part-time dispatch coach.
Well, as you know, our dispatcher, McCorney, is retiring here at the end of the month, end of July. And with that comes, going to have to fill that position. And this gentleman has been interested in some, for some time. Now we have a position open, we're going to bring him in. I think what we're looking to do is bring him in at a part-time status, see how things go. And if things go well, it could be something that goes into a full-time status. But obviously, we've got a lot of training and everything that's got to be done first and foremost, so we're going to be a little short-handed at first with the retirement coming as sudden as it did and with COVID and everything else going on, it's kind of had us strapped, so. But like everything else, we get through it.
Okay. And this candidate is a local.
Yep, local from the area, born and raised here, been around the area his whole life, so quite familiar with the Platteville, Bellicanac area, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the police new hire for a part-time dispatcher, Mr. Dale Williams.
I'll support it.
Okay, a motion and support. And then at a later normal meeting we have, you'll bring him in so that we can embarrass him?
Absolutely.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Right, that concludes new business. Go, board member comments. Cindy.
I have no comments today.
No? Okay, Mark?
Yeah, planning commission, we discussed various fencing waterfront issues. We'll still continue to do that, investigating and doing some benchmarking. The master plan update was a big packet that we went forward concerning a lot of areas along Point Trumbull, including some of the newer properties that we purchased and basically maybe redefining those as far as zoning is concerned. I'd like to thank the police department for the waterfront or the no-wake activity. I golf with a lot of people that live out in this area and they have boats and they're still upset about the 42-footers coming, or actually, the 12-footers coming down acting like they're 42-footers. So there's some high-speed, go-fast boats out there that are causing a lot of havoc. So how do you stop them? I don't know, but good luck. And anyways, thanks for the good job, guys. Thank you.
That, just so the board knows, we did receive those changes on boathouses and the containers.
Right, right.
Yeah, we, we did receive, so that will probably be on our next meeting.
Yep, exactly.
For us.
I don't know if you had a chance to review them or not.
Yeah, July, yeah, it'll be July.
It's all good.
Right. July 20th meeting, that will be, so. Thanks, Mark. Joanne?
Yeah, the ZBA will have another meeting this month concerning boathouses. But I have one request, that wonderful Zoom meeting that we had last time was so.
We're going to rehash some of those.
Yeah. I would like, and I think I mentioned, to have John come and.
For the water meters.
For the water meters, because the people should know, you know, how valuable that's going to be.
Yep.
And get a good understanding.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about the water meters and it was another topic we wanted. About the, the policies. About the Lex pole policies.
Yes, yes.
We'll, we'll, we'll rehash that and, and we'll have a little bit more working understanding on it. And maybe John can even bring in a water, one of the new meters, show and tell.
We did, we did, we had orientation this last week with the Lex pole and it's going to be a five, six-month process that we're working on with this. So it'll be something that will keep you updated as we're going along in progress and what we're doing, how we're doing. And if you got a chance, stop in and I can go over it with you as well. Because it's pretty in-depth, you know, what, what it's going to take to get all this done. In the long run, it's going to be well worth it.
Yep.
Just a comment I'd like to make, when Bruce came on the board, David Boyer was the supervisor, our fire department did not even have any SOGs or anything. And I worked with the clerk to get it done and.
Nothing more important.
Yeah, nothing more important.
And we're revamping ours from top to bottom.
Very important.
Especially with the environment that's going on outside. We cannot have enough training and up-to-date policies and procedures in place to protect the township ourselves, the employees, the first responders, and, and the people we're helping to. So, thank you.
It's all right, man.
My turn?
Yeah, it's your turn.
Very happy to be back here with everybody in this room. Hope everyone has a happy and safe Fourth of July, so we can return back here on July 20th for our meeting. And to our public safety officers, thank you for all you do and hope you have a relaxing weekend as well. And congratulations to Dale Williams.
Yes. Chris?
Yeah, I wanted to just start off by thanking all of our department heads, supervisor, our clerk, our treasurer, for all the hard work you guys have put in for this budget. I know it's not an easy task. You don't ask much from us, trustees, but I know on the back end what it takes to get that done. And I'm grateful that we could all come to agreements today. And I appreciate your efforts. Thank you to our first responders, police and fire, who continually demonstrate professionalism and courteous service to our residents. At a bubble of time in our society, it's comforting to know where we live and why we live here. And you guys continually demonstrate safety, respect for the residents, and I appreciate you guys and all of your staff. Thanks for the guys who busted their tail in this weekend on the township cleanup. That was a lot of work. John and his crew and some other guys chipped in and in gals. And I appreciate that because you could just look around and see all the improvement that it's made. So I just, there's a lot of good things going on behind the scenes and I'm grateful that I live here. Thank you.
Okay. Chrissy?
Well, tax notices for summer, they, they are being mailed today. Tax amounts will be available online starting tomorrow, because bills are payable beginning tomorrow. And mortgage companies were sent tax bills last week, so.
Summer taxes are due where?
Summer tax is due September 14th by 6:00 PM.
Okay. I hope this meeting comes out good on, on our TV. I mean, we're practicing social distancing as everybody can see and maybe not see and, and trying to do what's right and, and be safe. It's, I'd like to, yeah, think, congratulate Dale Williams, becoming a dispatcher and hopefully it will turn into a long and fruitful relationship with him. First responders, I can't say enough. And I want to mention that our community, the outpouring of support for our police and our firemen from this community is outstanding. I go over there, I could probably eat lunch over there free, the police, because, I mean, they're, they're always getting goodie bags and cookies and, and stuff. And the community is, is fantastic. So I thank the community for supporting our guys. I cannot fathom how the, the national news is about, you know, defunding the, the police and, and what, what kind of a chaotic. police and, and, and what, what kind of a chaotic society or, I wouldn't want to be able to have to run a township without a police department, I'll tell you that. You know, you, you have a problem, you know, when you call 911, you're not having a good day. And we'll send you good thoughts and that will take care of your problem. No, you're going to get, you know, a trained fireman, a, a, you know, or, or a police officer that's very well-trained and, and professional. And thank God we have. And that's all I have to say there. And yeah, the, the past week with the weekend cleanup, I think Harson's Island should be floating about three inches higher. I don't know. What do you think, Joanne? I mean, it's busy over here at the, at the mainland, but they are lined up, and I'm not exaggerating, 10, 15 cars deep with stuff. And, and everyone's usually having a good time and everyone, what are you throwing away, Millman? You know, there's a little, little horse jockeying around there. And I've seen some stuff that, yeah, I mean, they, how many boats do we have? Multiple boats.
How's trailer?
A travel trailer.
And it never gets any better every year, is that?
Oh, yeah. Uh. Yeah, refrigerators and stuff. And we got, we'll have to figure out how we're going to deal with that, the freon going forward. But, and gallons and gallons of hazardous material, oil, old gas, old oil, old chemicals. I don't even know what it is, you know. I drive by there at night, it was glowing. But it's better than ending up in our water system. 500 tires that would have probably ended up in our ditches. Am I right? It's people, there's, how do you get rid of them? People, how do you get rid of them? Man, wait till the cleanup weekend. That's all I can tell you. So, yeah, that's, it's a, it's a good thing. And, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, it's, we, it's been a lot of work, you know, through this COVID thing and then the high water and a lot of stress for people. But I, I, I get it. I mean, people call me up about, you know, the, the boat waves and, and high water, or my neighbor's not doing anything. And alls we can do is try to do the best we can and, and get through it. And someday, the water will go down. Someday. And someday, we'll be COVID-free. Someday. And someday, there won't be any civil unrest. But to deal with it all at the same time, it gets challenging and, and stressful for everybody. So, on that behalf, I.
Before I say motion to adjourn, adjourn, those fellows from the TPW did outstanding with that.
Yeah, the TPW, they worked hard on that. It was, I don't know, I think they kind of have fun out there. They, they won't tell you that. I, I went there, they had this little grill on the side cooking some pretty good burgers and stuff, so. It was hot. It, it was hot. So. Okay, we have motion adjourned. Second, all in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Great, having a meeting in person.